Good evening, everyone. Welcome to September 23rd, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Can we please first stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to make an announcement in the beginning that the board will be going into advice of counsel at the end of the meeting. This is due to pending litigation. Okay, we have correspondence. Do you think anybody wanted to discuss in there?
No.
Not either. John, you're on.
Good.
Just routine.
Nothing here.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, and I'm sorry.
Just routine items.
Okay, we'll move to the meeting minutes of September 9th, 2024. Any comments, alterations, corrections?
Not here.
All good?
Nothing here.
Counselor? Motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 9th, 2024.
Motion.
Second. Aye.
Abstain.
Very much. I think it's Tom. He's keeping us on our toes. All right, we're in the regular portion of the meeting. First, we have the Ryder subdivision. This is a decision statement. Location's 532 Underhill Road Avenue. Excuse me? Still at work. Sorry, Joe.
That's okay.
That was it?
I don't know.
No, it wasn't it?
That wasn't it. Good track.
All right, maybe that was it. Sorry.
That's okay. Anyway, I did receive a draft of the resolution. I have no issue with the conditions.
Put it on the board. John?
There was discussion about the completion of the wetland mitigation and at what point that needs to take place. And I think I would suggest adding a requirement that it is completed prior to the issuance of the first C of O.
No issue with that.
Okay.
Counselor?
No issues.
Okay. All right, then do we have a motion to declare the board lead agency to the Ryder subdivision?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
In front of us, we have a neg deck. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Lastly, we have a resolution to approving, excuse me, the subdivision plot titled Ryder subdivision with the amendment as John noted.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Good, thank you.
To go.
Thanks.
So we have a motion to move into the work session portion of the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All right. First, we have the MJM subdivision. This is a discussion of a major subdivision, 3232 Gomer Street. It's Jorina. I will tell you, I had the opportunity to talk to Highway Superintendent Dave Paganelly this morning. And, um, you know, I think the applicant is looking for direction one way or another. And he did advise me that he was in favor of the two, looking at everything. That being said, he was in favor of the two entries, separate entrances.
Cordial and Gomer?
Yeah.
And not, okay. Not off London.
Yeah, I met him. He said the same. I happened to meet him in CBS, but he was, he was sort of called for it for the two entrances. If you need direction, this is where we're going.
So is that what we're thinking at this point? Because I, we definitely got a, um, you know, some of his concerns are very well warranted.
Did he have any comments about Cordial? The, the, what's the, that's the road on the top, right?
No.
What's the road on the top?
The now.
That's Cordial.
Yeah, he figured with the six compared to the total, you know, how many vehicles he can have driving out of there any time.
Right.
And I think as we get deeper into it, we'll have to talk about, you know, looking at that road too. But at least we can give Joe direction.
Well, in the, using the cordial access, one of the sketches included some widening. And is that going to become part of your mitigation or your proposal?
Well, I was asked to provide this, a little study here. So essentially, um, what I'm showing here in, in the red is the amount of widening up to our site that would be required to bring it up to, uh, town code of 24 feet wide. Everything, uh, west of the red is currently the standard. The blue is beyond our project site, and that would, that's what would need to be done to widen that up to town standard.
So are you proposing to do blue and red or just red?
I'm not proposing anything yet, but we're, we're, we're looking to discuss, you know, we're, we're ready to discuss it.
If the access offer cordial becomes the preferred
Right.
plan, would you then be proposing, or as part of that access, in order for it to work properly, uh, blue and red widening?
I, I would say, and I'm not speaking for the applicant at this point. I'd speak, be speaking for, for where I would take this, because I would just go for the red, which that would be the exit point if you were leaving from there and trying to get out to Gomer Street, that's the way you would go. I'm not closing the door to anything. I'm just telling you my position I have, and I would have to see what my, what my client would, would want to do.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we got a direction.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, I think we, you've got to start working on those plans so we could see the details.
Okay.
John, anything else?
Nothing right now. It's a matter of taking that plan and, and starting to refine the lots and, you know, some of the other things that have been happening.
Starting to really develop in them.
Correct.
Okay?
Right.
Anything else?
That's it.
Counselor?
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks for those, uh, putting together those
Yep.
those details.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Savannah's Restaurant. This is a discussion of site plan. I think everybody knows where it is, but 3901 Crom pound Road. And we did get, um, a memo today from Dan Ciarcia. We've received the plans and found that the proposed stormwater improvements to be acceptable. An erosion control plan should be provided prior to improvement. How are you?
How are you? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right, let's give me a second.
So the
So, you want me to, good. I'll start, I guess, if you want me to.
Go ahead.
So, uh, I'm Jim Anacarico with Corona Engineering. So, yep, we provided a stormwater mitigation plan for the parking area behind the building. Pretty much just Coltex on the side, east side of the building, picking up the water quality volume from the area that's been paved and a possible future area. So as you know, like you stated, Dan reviewed them. His only comment is just for us to provide him with a erosion sediment control plan, which we can do that.
Were we missing anything else in this, John?
The seasonal patio, do you have a seating count for that yet?
For, do we have seating counting?
The, the new patio out in the back?
All right, David Tetra, architect, working with Savannah's. What's that? No, I had that in the calculations on the first sheet.
Okay.
It wouldn't be on this drawing. It would be on the previous drawings that were submitted in.
Okay.
1A01?
I believe so, yes.
Day 724?
Sounds about right.
This first floor interior and exterior, 127. Second floor, 48, total seating, 175.
The, um, where it's on the first floor, where it says exterior?
Okay, that's different than this.
Yes, because
That's not broken down?
Yeah, you've got if you look where it says areas, parking requirements, right where the cursor is? It says interior and exterior. It has it broken down into two rows under first floor. Uh, I'm sorry, that's the square footage.
Square footage, yeah. So you're in 630 square feet.
Oh, sorry, um, where is it? No, no, it's there. Under occupancy, first floor, interior and exterior, on the left-hand side, right under the word code.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I see that, but wasn't, didn't you want it broken down in some fashion?
Your under occupancy?
Yes, up in the corner.
All right. Yes, basically, when you get to an approval, you need to have a special permit for that outdoor seating, and it's going to have to have the number on it. That's, we can get to that fairly easy, so.
Yeah, it's, I could break that out. That's fine. I mean, we spoke at the last, the last planning board meeting about getting together and running through the parking numbers and that, just kind of clearing up the table for
Right, which we can do that next step. That's fine.
Yeah, it's a total parking required, 74. Total parking provided, 74.
We, yeah, we added parking
Right.
to the, there's room back there, the conservation spaces, et cetera.
Yeah.
Right, there's lots of room on the top.
So what's left? Any issues?
No issues here.
Straightforward. What's the next steps, John?
Uh, just refine the things that we talked about, and then we can start developing, uh, a draft resolution for you to consider.
Sure.
So one more meeting then? One more meeting?
Yeah, should be.
I, I love coming to visit you guys.
You move up to the regular, you move up to the top of the page next time.
Move, move the seating capacity to the top of the page?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, you move up to the top level.
Oh, there you go. That sounds good.
Yes, it does.
All right, so, but as far as the engineering, that, just go back. That's done. We're good.
Dan's good. You just need to, he just wants some details on the plan, which is
He's right there.
very straightforward.
And then when I come back next, I'll get the go-ahead to go.
Just make sure, yeah, make sure John's got the resolution going.
If Dave does what he just said he's going to do.
Of course.
All right, so we're clear. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Bye, everybody. Have fun.
All right, next we have the Lamp subdivision. Excuse me, this is a discussion of a minor subdivision, locations 357 Crow Hill Road. Oh. Got a memo on this one too. We did also get a memo today from Dan Ciarcia, town engineer. These plans should be revised to include stormwater management practices to demonstrate the feasibility of the application.
Hold on, this isn't connected.
In here? No.
It is failing to resolve host name. If you happen to have the plans. Thank you. Good evening, Jody Cross from Zarenstein Metz, here today on the Lamp subdivision at 357 Crow Hill Road. I'm here with Mr. Lamp and Paul Lynch, the project engineer. And again, we're here for a minor two-lot subdivision. We submitted revised plans. Actually, those are the older plans. Those are the current plans. So we've reconfigured the house. We're now showing the septic area. We're also showing the proposed well location. And we're also showing, and I'll get into this a little bit more detail, that we're extending the existing access drive by two feet. So it's 14 feet now. So since we were last here in July, we had a site visit. We had board members come out. We also had the fire chief come out. The fire chief, and we submitted correspondence from him. He had no concerns regarding the existing 14-foot width. But for those of you who are out at the property, you saw the road, the driveway needed some maintenance work, so they were already going ahead and paving it, so we decided to extend that by two feet to make that a 16-foot. We're also, uh, we also cut back about three feet of vegetation that was encroaching on the, on the access drive to make that more, to make it wider. And we're also widening the entranceway, which is, I think, a suggestion either by the board and/or the fire chief. Um, and we've improved the site distance and the site, um, uh, at the entranceway. And I had pictures that I was going to show, so I apologize for that, but I do have them printed. This is the existing driveway.
Thank you.
So they're actually coming out, uh, they've already started doing the work, but we wanted you to see that the, uh, the clearing, the catch basin's being, um, fixed up. The drainage is being fixed over there, and, um, the vegetation is cleared, so you could see how it's a much, uh, more accessible area. So at this point, um, I believe we need a referral over to the zoning board, and we also need to, to schedule a public information hearing. So we're ready to answer any questions. We had not seen Dan's memo, so we haven't obviously addressed any of that.
He's in the back now. I see him.
Hi, Dan.
He snuck in.
So these are the existing conditions. Obviously, when the work is done, we'll submit photos of, uh, the widened driveway.
Obviously, you clean the site distance out front too.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure everybody on that block appreciates that.
I think it's, uh, would you clear three feet on each, either side, um, to make that wider and to make the site distance much better?
Yeah, it looks like they cleaned up quite a bit.
That'd be the last page.
That's an appro, I was out there. That's an improvement. That's good.
Did you submit the agreement amongst?
There is an easement agreement we submitted with our initial submission. I'm sorry?
The existing one?
Yes.
Does it need to be modified to add the new home?
No. It actually contemplates adding new homes and how it gets broken down cost-wise between the neighbors.
So this got, this has to be referred to the zoning board?
Well, I think probably you do the P I H
First?
first, get that out of the way.
Okay.
And then at the next meeting, you can make that referral. Uh, that's my sense of it.
All right, so work with Brown on the date.
Excellent.
Get you that. We'll move on from there.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, next we have the Attrack Recycling Facility. This is a discussion of the site plan and special use permit. Location is 76 Route 6.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, second, second on deck for the Zarenstein Metz tonight. David Cooper, partner with the, uh, law firm of Zarenstein Metz, here, uh, serving as land use counsel to the applicant. With me tonight is Jaclyn Cohen, my colleague, who you, who you know, uh, as well as Andrew Zidman from Senesio's Ross, Frenzy and Carmel, litigation counsel on the matter. You only have attorneys here with you, with us tonight for two reasons. One, on the land use side, we just found out on Friday afternoon that, that this matter was being added to the, or was on the agenda. So our consultant team is not, was not available tonight and nor is the client, so we're certainly here. We have a couple of procedural questions to ask the board and, and ask for a recommendation back to the zoning board. And I'm sure you've heard, uh, what, what occurred at the town board last, last week in terms of the proposal to rezone the site or rezone, or take the use out of rezoning. That's why counsel's with me tonight. On the land use side, uh, we submitted materials to your board, uh, July 31st, in response to questions about the siting question. So just going, just going, taking a step back, as you remember, uh, we are before the zoning board on a request for a side yard variance for 101-foot side yard on that eastern side for the portion of the property, sorry, the portion of the building that would be on the upper portion of, of the property. We did, uh, present to you, your board, as well as zoning board, uh, in, in July, a proposal where it, uh, the building could be built as of right, consistent with the zoning, down on the, on the, sort of the bottom area of, of the, of the property. We, we've already explained it in our cover letter. We believe that the siting that requires the variance is the more appropriate siting because it's, it's set back, there's more buffering, it's, it's got, you know, better setbacks, et cetera. But, uh, the zoning board has asked your board for a recommendation on which site you think is, is preferable. So we've been, uh, what I'll call stuck in limbo before the zoning board, we were there last week or, or two weeks ago, asking them to vote, but they, they have said, we, we're not going to vote until we hear from you. So we're here tonight on the land use side to ask that this board issue its recommendation to the zoning board so that we can continue to move forward with the zoning board, uh, and then, um, continue processing this application.
See, you chased Dan out here, by the way. When you said three attorneys?
What's that? I, I just
Ran out.
Now.
So now it's back here, and we have the two options at this point. I think for the second option, which we'll say was in the front yard, right, for all
Closer to Route 6.
Right, to Route 6. We had questions about the setback in regards to where that started.
Yes, that was one of the questions.
All right, well, I think that was one of the, the did we, we haven't gotten have we gotten any clarity on that?
I don't think that's been settled, no. But there's still, you know, looking at that alternative that was produced at the request of the board, that is a zoning compliant alternative. But I think what needs to be looked at is what is the best siting of the building on this site, given some of the impacts that have been brought to light. So if you look at the original and the preferred, the applicant's preferred plan, the building is all the way in the back, closer to the residential zone in Somers, and also closer to the future, uh, as we have seen in some application materials of their neighbor, of resident residences as well.
Right.
Placing this building somewhere nearer to Route 6 and away from those receptors, let's call them, may be a better site without being constrained by the zoning setback lines here. So I think there needs to be some analysis and some design work done to analyze what those, what those, um, potential sightings may be. So when I look at alternative two, or the, or the, um, alternative that you requested, it's zoning compliance. So it, it's stuck right in the middle of that, uh, you know, that rectangle there that is kind of parallel to Route 6. I, I mean, I can see that moving back and being a little bit further from Route 6, where you can screen it better, uh, where it's not going to be as close as we've seen them analyze to the neighbors across Route 6. It will have more, um, wetland buffer, uh, encroachment, but I think those numbers should be analyzed. You know, what's the wetland buffer encroachment and wetland, wetland encroachment on alternative two? What is it on, on alternative three? What is it on the preferred alternative? So you have an understanding of what all those impacts are, and you can actually select and design this site to its, its best sighting. I don't, I don't think you've gotten there yet, because we, the last that we saw this, this was a new set of documents that hadn't, they were just presented at that, that last meeting, rather than that, than having, uh, anyone go through them and analyze them. So those are the kinds of questions that I think remain.
Because I think, not to cut you off, but I think the, the last meeting we were here, you were a consultant and from upstate New York. You kind of talked about the operations inside.
Uh, the last time we were here was July 15th.
Right.
And we, we did have, I believe it was July 15th meeting where the consultant was here to discuss the operations and regulatory controls.
Yes.
And then we did submit materials after that. This is the first time we've been back on the agenda since that submission
Yep.
two months ago, so.
So, and I'm sorry to cut you off. In reference to what John's saying, can we get the engineer to work with Dan and John's office to kind of work out these different variables that we'd be looking at?
Well, the, the, the variables, we understand the variables, yes. Just, uh, what, what you have in front of you, I believe, shows all that, right? You, you've got setbacks, you, you understand, you can understand where, where the difference between setback from the road, setback from, from adjacent properties, residential properties, across the road, et cetera, on both sides. And at the request of the board, we also included, um, the conceptual layout of the residential development that's, uh, proposed just to take us to the north.
Upstream.
Obviously, that's still in design phase, so we just, we can only use, uh,
I understand.
But, um, I, I would submit, you, you have what you need with respect to the siting questions, as to whether or not, uh, you think there's sufficient area for buffer, sufficient area for noise buffer, visual buffer, lighting, et cetera. Because the, the specific design, like downlighting, you know, whether, whether it's going to be up on the hill or down the hill, the lighting itself isn't, it wouldn't change. It's just you, you would, you would use similar lighting so that it's not shooting a, uh, you know, footprint out to the road, et cetera.
Yeah, that's more of the devil in the details at the end.
Right.
I think what John is requesting is some of the details now with wetlands in regards to the two alternatives, which, you know, the board think would be more appropriate.
Well, there may be another, another alternative, which turns out to be the, the optimal sighting, right? So if, if this building on alternative two gets pushed back, maybe that's a better situation or more optimal than the first two. So I'm, I'm suggesting that the design process hasn't played itself out here yet completely.
And I, I think that's, you know, one of the, the pushes, the drives for this board, is to make sure, obviously, the impacts in the surrounding area are addressed the best we can. Obviously, it's still, you know, an approved use in the area. There's a few options in front of us. You know, in my, as one board member, I think the, the building up front works better. At least protects the other surrounding areas a little bit better. But we still got parking in the back, and you guys still got to cross into the wetland. And, you know, to John's point, if you push the building back, that's further away from the residents across the street. And still, I think for the, you know, the good distance.
If you push the building back, it's closer to the residents in the back of the place.
Well, I think that'll be a lot further away than what's across the street, possibly.
Well, the, if, if we're talking about what's showing on the screen now, which is the, which is the alternative, the, so the, the as-of-right alternative is what it put the, so, the as-of-right alternatives, what, what, the, there's a red. There we go. There's, there's a, there's a red outline or dotted line there which shows the, the buffer from the wetlands. So, the, the issue of how far back can you push this building, it's identified on the plan because you see the, the, the building footprint down there. If, there isn't much, much more room to go further back because of the, the wetland buffer.
Well, I think what.
But, you're already in the buffer, Dave, on, on this plan.
Yeah.
You, you have buffer encroachment and wetland encroachment on both alternatives, right?
Uh, there's, there's a small encroachment on, on, in, on this plan, but if you move it back, you're gonna, you're gonna go, almost the entire building would be.
Creating the damage, I'm sorry, John.
You're, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I apologize, but your, 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 both of these proposals have impacts to both wetlands and wetland buffers right now, right? So, what I'm suggesting is, you can move that, that building around on this site to manage those, and I don't mean to lessen them necessarily, but to, to place the building in the least impactful site where the impacts to the, both the wetlands and the wetland buffers are still mitigable.
Which, right.
Right, so there's still, you can still move this thing around a little bit and analyze what they are and maybe, maybe further improve how this is impacting its surroundings.
And John, and we're, yeah, and we're happy to do that, right? But, but the issue is, the, the proposal is up on the hill, right? Way, way away from those wetlands. And so, if the, if the planning board is saying to us, we, we don't like that, we don't like that layout. We're going to tell the zoning board, we don't believe that that's the best layout. So be it, send that, send that recommendation to the zoning board so we can end that process or get the vote on that process and move back forward and, and finish it up on, on that side. And we're, we're kind of, we've been in limbo, procedural limbo for, for a long time now because one board's.
Yeah, I, I have to, as I've said and we've discussed before, the practice has always been, when you're doing a land use site plan, and it, the, the preferred layout that the board determines is preferred and can move forward and it, but it needs a zoning board variance, it's at that point that they then send it over to the zoning board. So, the, I think the limbo is kind of, you know, before the horse, it's, you know.
Well, I, well, I'll.
And you and I have had the discussion on the phone a couple times before, but.
Yeah, I will respectfully disagree with that, I, I understand. Obviously, there, there's, there's a sub-context here because of what the town board has said that they're, they want to do here.
But, that has, right, but that has nothing to do.
Right, it is what it is, yes.
It has nothing to do with choosing the best site for this building.
Well, but the, but the issue, the issue from our perspective is, look, if they're, they're, they're considering that, we, you know, we, we've seen it, we've heard it, but we're trying not to be held up here. And, and so, what we're asking then is, look, if, if, our request tonight, if, if you guys say no, you say no. Our request tonight is, please issue recommendations to the zoning board so we can, we can get back to them.
So, it's just.
Go ahead.
You're asking us to make a choice, the lesser of two evils is never a good result. Because each one of your plans we're looking at right now has advantages and disadvantages. And so, that's why I think, you know, limbo, it's limbo because the lesser of two evils, there's no good result, right? So, if it's in one location, it's in, not in compliance with zoning, current law, and yet there might be a better spot, but there's a lot of aspects about that that are not appealing as well. So, that's why I think we find ourselves in limbo.
I have a proposal to make to get us out of that limbo. I think regardless of where the building is sitting, the impacts to the community and the adverse environmental impacts, this project remain. I think, having read everything again recently and just looking at a recent memo from one of our consultants, I think this has unavoidable adverse environmental impacts and we should issue a positive declaration so that we can properly and adequately study all of the impacts of this proposal regardless of where they're citing the building, because that's not going to change.
Right.
The overall environmental impacts of this project. If it's going to change some site impacts, yes. But, to me, those are not nearly as significant or adverse as the broader impacts of this kind of thing. So, that's my proposal.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because we really.
The, the effect on the neighborhood.
That's right. We really haven't gotten to that point yet, right? I mean, because it's all about the built, placement of the building, which is what's gotten us here.
Well, I don't know exactly when, you know, we, we wrestle with this type of thing, you know.
This is, I'm sorry, it's work session, we don't allow any comments from the phone.
Oh, catch the.
Sorry.
I mean, we wrestle with, you know, our reviews are generally incremental and we end up with a pretty thorough review. This has a lot of stuff here that we're not even discussing yet.
What we do here, no offense to the board members here, has nothing to do with the town board. You know, if we're on a path and we're gonna, until they change something, we're gonna continue.
We are independent.
Yes. So, they have.
We don't beholden to nobody.
Their agenda's, we have separate, obviously, you could see that as you're here a lot. So, as we move forward, is, if that might be the, the cleanest way around this. Your thoughts?
Well, I think what you've been asking for is moving to, I mean, you're really requesting some analysis.
Yeah, well, this'll certainly compel.
You know, you could do that in one fell swoop or you can, you know, let it become uncovered as we, as it unfolds. But, you know, that's, that's up to you.
I missed you at the last meeting, did I say that?
I was having a good time.
I bet you were. That, I, that makes sense. So, let's do that.
I, I agree with him.
You're looking for me for comment, or?
No, I'm just.
I mean, I, look, I, I, and you could talk to your counsel about that. I, I don't know that, I don't know that you've got the proper record to suddenly, to suddenly issue a pause deck, particularly a week after that the town board has announced that it wants to, to rezone it, but, look, you know. I know, I know.
If it wasn't, if it was an insignificant project, the town, it wouldn't be before the town board for them to think about changing the use. But, meantime, we have it, the use is permissible, the question is, what are the impacts of that use? That's what we deal with.
There's, there's a traffic study, I didn't know if the applicant was.
Applicant has one.
Right, I didn't know if they wanted to respond to the villages, or the towns, excuse me, the towns. Uh, well, I did read the letter from a planner, an AICP about, presumably about traffic, although I would say.
This is the transpo group letter you're referring?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, it certainly wasn't written to assist the planning board in its assessment of the proper sighting. The first half appears to be justifying what the town board is doing with respect to the zoning. The second half has some comments about the traffic report. I received it this morning, so Kim Lee Horn, the traffic engineer who submitted the report back in July, certainly hasn't had, had a chance to, to review those, those comments. But, to, to suggest that, that that would be the basis upon which this board could issue a positive declaration, because there's, there's no empirical analysis in there, it's just suggestions about the, the parking. I wasn't suggesting anything, I was asking if you wanted to have your engineer respond to it, that's all. Well, of course, of course, we're going to respond to it, it's, it's a common, the only, the only thing I would ask is, did that, when, when was that consultant retained? I mean, is that, did that come out of the applicant's escrow to, to cover that?
I don't know.
The, the analysis of, of the, of the.
That's, that's the first look that they took from what the applicant submitted.
Mm-hmm, gotcha. I mean, from, from.
And it's not that, it's, I'm sure that they will look again deeper and your engineer will respond and, you know, will move along through as we, as we typically do.
Right, on, on the, on the traffic analysis, what I'd call the, the final third of that letter, certainly Kim Lee Horn would, would respond to that in, in due course and as, as any applicant would.
All right, so in the meantime, David, do you want to go through it and brush your t's and dot your i's and make sure we're not getting ourselves in any trouble as we proceed forward?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and in the meantime, you could have your engineer sit down with John and Robin and group, and Dan, to see if you could talk about some of the pluses and minuses there.
All right, I'll pass the message along.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good?
Well, yes, I still have to stay here for a couple of matters, but yeah.
I'm sure, I wonder why.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, now we have three town board referrals. First one is mending chapter three hundred recycling facilities.
You want to hold that, or? I wanted to talk to.
Counsel?
Yeah, perhaps.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So, we'll table that, or do you want to?
Put it at the end.
Put it down.
Okay, let's put it towards the end. Next, we have chapter three hundred, the solar law. And we also, right on top of that is the battery, battery storage facilities moratorium.
Is this the one where the issue is, did they take, did they take out the two-hundred-foot setback on, on this law?
So.
No.
Still, it's still in the proposed amendments.
Okay, and I read from, just forgive me, from the meeting I missed, there was a lot of discussion on the significance of the width of that setback. Is controlling or not being as significant as it seems if you have enough screening, right?
Yes, and I think the applicant, at the last meeting, it was LaBella, the LaBella Group, did a really nice job outlining exactly when you stand where and, you know, with the topography there, what you're going to say. Really told the story, and I think, you know, we conducted a site walk this week, you know, at the Foothill Project, which was very interesting to see, just, you know, everything cleared. And you could see some pluses and minuses with, with all that. But, they're looking for direction or any comments.
On this law?
Yes, as it's in front of them.
I didn't see any issues that came out and said, you know, we shouldn't, we should, they should make changes except that setback.
Yeah.
That's all.
Some were squirreled, I mean, it's, it's, I don't, I don't see any problem with it at all.
We're keeping it at the two-hundred?
As it is.
Well, that's, that's a proposal from, going from one-hundred to two-hundred, just so we're clear.
Doubling it.
Doubling it.
Yep.
And that's the residential setback?
You're doubling it, it's not for noise or light.
Yes, right.
It's for, this is clearly visual.
Right.
So, and I think, again, I talked about some of the projects I've seen on my day job where, you know, and as I think the last applicant, last week, the last meeting demonstrated, you could do a wall green. So, is that more appropriate, or is it, you know, the change and they?
Maybe put some flexibility in then, instead of an absolute number.
If it could be demonstrated.
Is that feasible? I know we can do it with noise because you can measure it.
Yeah, this is quiet, this is visual.
Well, we always have to worry about visual pollution, that's, that's one thing, right?
Yeah.
So, that would be taking up the screening and stuff.
It is.
This is.
I mean, I understand why they put it in there, but I, you've also seen.
Yeah.
Where it could be done correctly, it could be done effectively.
I think anything that helps the neighborhood shield from these solar farms and battery operated is, is good.
That's the goal, so the question is how we're going to get there.
How we get there.
No.
The two, the question is whether or not the two-hundred gets you something significant enough that helps move along in that regard.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think the discussion last time revolved around, you know, as you go further back and your screening measures are, go along with, you know, from one-hundred to two-hundred, they may be less effective because now they're further away from you and their profile to the perceiver or the viewer is actually smaller, right? You put a, you put a, a tree up right in front of you, you won't be able to see anything. So, the closer some of those measures may be to you, the more effective they may be. And that's why the line of sight diagrams are so effective and helpful, because you can get the perspective, that cone of, of vision from the top of the, you know, where the highest solar panel might be in the lowest part, and you can move that screening all, all the way in that cone to make it more effective or, or catch it perfectly at, at a ten-foot, you know, planting height? Or, or move it even further so that ten feet is now, you know, screening something that's now three-hundred or four-hundred feet away, which is the highest part of the panel.
So, can that standard be legislated? That kind of description that you're talking about, that there's a range depending upon what people see?
Well, I, I think that it, it works through the site planning process, that you go through these, these studies and the planning board.
Yeah.
Moves along to try to make that happen to the greatest success that you can make. I don't know that you can put it down to numbers. I mean, part of the issue here with changing the law was, when it said, for instance, fully screened.
Right.
People use that, well, I'm going to be able to see this from, you know, a thousand feet away from my, my bathroom window. You know, you're not going to be able to fully screen it from every vantage point. It's going to be very unusual to do so. And so, it always really has to be to the best condition that you can create in the most reasonable way, which I think that most often you can create a very good situation reasonably, but.
Could we put something in there?
Remember, we're suggesting it back.
Yes. Where, you know, we have sometimes flexibility standards in certain subdivisions. Is there something that could be done in reference to that with these? Where if we could, like, best engineering practices or landscape architecture? You know, that if, there's a, the possibility to have that done, that that could be under the purview of the board?
If we can find a set of those practices that are written in a manner that works, I think.
Well, we, we have it somewhat with, with flexibility, right? When we, when the town board installed to their, in their wheelhouse, but they'll, through their actions, grant us the ability to use those standards, right? Maybe we could do something like that.
I think we can take that and flexibility ourselves. Hopefully, it needs to go back and forth.
So, you'd like to see discretion on the two-hundred-foot setback?
You wouldn't want to see a project.
Yes.
Be done.
That's really what you're talking about.
That's what I'm, that's what I think we're talking about. You know, you can set the outer limits and then we can come in and say, some, you know, there's a minimum and a maximum and somewhere in between, for particular sites, may work better than others.
And some they might not.
Yeah, and we may have to go all the way out.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I'm going to make your suggestion, I, you know, I, the two-hundred-foot setback was, was a part of something that I think came up in one of our meetings, I think it was here where the applicant actually suggested it. And, and, you know, I thought it was a good idea. But, I'm, you know, I, like so many other things, you know, I listen, I learn, I make my decisions and, and based on, you know, a well-informed and educated decision, and that's what I try to get to, so.
Let's put that out.
If you want to put it out, they put it out there, yeah.
Okay.
It's no problem.
Good, I'm game for that, I'm game.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on the solar?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. Now, in reference to the battery storage facilities moratorium, I think as we've seen a lot of our neighbors doing right now, this is a very new technology, at least the way we're seeing it built out now. I think there's a lot to learn about it. And again, I always yield to the firemen, but you hear these stories and you go to this code class and you hear about it, as much as it's necessary with, you know, what's going on with the pushing of everything electric, just my opinion is, I think it would be smart.
I would support it.
I would, I would support it, absolutely.
There was actually an article.
Might change in the next six months, seven months.
We're seeing the change already, look at BJ's.
Of course.
They, those batteries that they put in there just a few years back are not completely different.
The same one with, the one we approved up on Goma Court.
Yeah.
It's not changed. There was actually an article by, I think, and don't quote me on it, by the Mount Kisco, some, a firefighter in Mount Kisco, the chief or something, I don't remember who it actually was, I think it's in the paper, The Examiner. And, and I haven't verified the accuracy of it, but he's claiming that most fire departments are ill-equipped to deal with these types of fires.
I believe that.
I believe that too, but, yeah, I haven't verified the accuracy of it, so.
I just, you know, and it's coming at us fast and furious. And again, I'm curious to see what, what's just the county planning is to say about it too, because they deal with the entirety of the county. But, I, I think it's, it's smart to do at this point.
Yeah, I would.
I think the way they fight it is they just let them burn out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, really, you can't fight him.
That's what they do.
Like, the cars are the same thing.
Right.
You know, they.
That's why we have to contain them, if we, if we have a concrete containment, if we have approved a, a job.
You spray it, it gets worse.
It's, it's, you just, how about that electric car, it blew up?
Yeah.
Don't you believe that?
No.
An electric car, it exploded until the two people, and you know them, right?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the technology is not there to contain those fires.
No, that was tough.
Okay.
Anyway. All right, so.
Favor.
That we will do a memo. Memo in favor of that one.
Did the, um, the IBM, uh, storage battery, that's not, that's already approved, right? That's not part of, it wouldn't be affected by the moratorium.
No.
No, that's. We got that, we got the one at BJ's.
Right. I'm ju- I'm just thinking, there might be some interesting people to ask about some of the changes in this, because, you know, they've.
They're on top of their game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't hurt.
That's it.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
All right, at this time, I'm gonna ask the board, a motion to go into advice of counsel?
Motion to go into closed session for advice of counsel.
All's in favor.
On pending litigation.
We will be back, I believe, for the last item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Linda.
Can I ask you all just to?
Give out your numbers so you, you just can get together. Yeah, right, I, she, she, uh, she's the leader, oh.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for everyone's patience. Do we have a motion to move back in the work session?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, last on the agenda is the town board.
Just, just for the record.
Oh, you want me to, God, you could.
Uh, the board did go into closed session to have a discussion about litigation, and the only people who were present besides the board members in that discussion were our planning staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And next, and last on the agenda, is the town board referral, amending chapter three hundred recycling facilities. Anybody want to discuss it? Open it up, start the process.
Well, one question comes to my mind is, uh, this affects all the properties in the industrial zone, light industrial zone, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, taking out a recycling use across the board eliminates that use in the town completely. And I'm wondering if that's the best way to approach the problem that we have for the town.
Right.
I think, Rob, you had.
Yeah, no, I think it.
Comments on that.
You know, because there's a variety of use cases, and, and, and the type of recycling, uh, efforts are obviously for community good, so I wouldn't be in favor of eliminating it. I would think it needs some definition around what's appropriate, what can be done, and what, what is, uh, allowed in that zone. But I wouldn't remove the entire, because it's a, it's an appropriate use.
Necessary.
Yeah, necessary use.
So one of our consultants distinguished between what we consider recycling, you know, taking the bins of plastic out, and construction debris work.
Right.
As a way of defining or narrowing the kind of use perhaps.
Yeah.
I mean, you could recycle, uh, leaves, organic waste.
Hardwood.
Household food items, like with food scrap.
Well, there's a reason the county does different things, right? When you have these big e-waste, uh, days and so forth, they do that because there's nowhere else to take it, right? Because you can't put it out on your curb. We have a definition of what's right and wrong in our refuse and our bulk pickup. There's certain things you can't put in bulk pickup because it's not appropriate. Uh, it could be that ultimately, in terms of the use, uh, of a particular, in, in a particular zone, could be defined using some of those ideas.
Mm-hmm.
Because you need to be able to do it.
Oh, listen, people, you need to be able to bring material somewhere.
Yes. Right.
Which is where it's appropriate.
Right.
And with the least amount of impact.
This law knocks the use out completely, right? Is that my reading of it?
From the I-one zone.
And I-one zone is, of course, we know the Navajo Street. Where else?
Lexington Avenue.
Anything south? Okay.
Over here, front street is I-two.
I-two, okay.
What's a, can you just give, what's the difference between those, I-one and I-two?
Uh, the I-one is a, um, light industrial area, like a campus type, and that's how it starts out, and you can split up the properties. Under which you find the ability to do the recycle. I-two has most of the uses, there are several uses listed, but they are, it's, it's a little bit more vague in terms of, there's a list that the town board maintains from time to time, so it's, it's different in that respect.
Which one's more intensive in terms of, you know?
I think the I-one.
I-one, okay.
So should we look to have them add definitions?
Well, that's just, yeah, I mean, that would be, to me, I think just eliminating is not the right way to do it. Define what the intent is, what, what the limitations are. Do you allow the recycling of lithium batteries or, or.
Furniture.
Paint cans and chemicals.
Furniture.
I mean, again, it's, yeah, right.
Anything, you'd be basically barring that from happening.
There certainly could be some things that are not appropriate that close, you know, to a residential area, depending upon where the I-one or I-two begins and ends.
So the town could do that, right? They could define recycling of this type of material is appropriate, but not something else, right?
Right.
There's a big difference.
I mean, it's like the difference between having vape shops or not, right? I mean, you can have a.
Yeah.
You know, a cigar store, but not a vape shop, or.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think that, you know, somebody once said the devil's in the details. But, uh, that would be, one thought would be to go back to them and say, look, this needs a broader definition, a more academic definition than just striking it from the books.
I agree. I mean, if someone wanted to open up like that next to the Westchester County Airport, you could, they recycle furniture. And they take a lot of this furniture and they give it to people in need. And it's, it's a recycling facility, just recycling furniture. That's a, not, you know, a large intense impact where if you have, you know, this application that, you know, we have in front of us isn't the same, but if someone wanted to start putting mulch, turn it into topsoil, you know, there's, it is a lot to look at. I don't know how we.
How do we write a memo like that?
Do you want me to draft you something up?
Yeah.
Isn't that usually what happens?
Yeah. Okay.
All right?
I think so.
Anything else at this time? Good?
Good.
So a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close.
Is it a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.